Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology and Federal and Foreign Affairs to order. It is 2:15 or 2:16 in the afternoon. I apologize for the delay of time for what's the there was a previous public hearing and we'll see how we can catch up. But I will note for the record and in accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Wednesday, October 25, 2023, adhering to the five-day notice and a second public notice on Monday, October 30, 48 hours prior. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website at www.gwamlegislature.com. I will note that written testimonies may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org, or you may hand deliver to our office at Suite 411, 134 West Salada Avenue, Haganja, Guam. Ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda, we have the informational briefing, Government of Guam, and the Guam Broadband Infrastructure Five-Year Action Plan. Joining me this afternoon, I'd like to thank Senator Joe Sinagastin, who is the Oversight Chair on Budget. Thank you very much, sir, for being here, and also Senator Ted Agui for being here this afternoon. Before we proceed with the discussion, I would first like to provide some general rules of conduct for all who are here in attendance, and there's a lot of you. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. One, those identifying will be recognized in the order of the sign-up sheet on the sign on the sign-up on this sign-up sheet. And if anyone here who has not signed in and would like to present written testimony or oral testimony, please do so by seeing my committee director, Mr. Sabetta, on the table all over there. You can raise your hand, sir. Number two, written testimony may be read and submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Lengthy testimony should be summarized to five minutes. Once you are done, please remain in the room for any questions for my colleagues. I will note for the record, I know that Gov Guam, the administration, has another meeting. And again, I'll afford you that time. If you have to leave, I we can always follow up. But I just want to note that for the record, and thank you for giving me that advance notice that you guys have another meeting. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal of the from the hearing room. When you speak, I kindly ask that you please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please also state your name for the record and where you're from. In the interest of time, each member will be given five minutes, and if needed, we will do a second round of questions to the panel. Those who do not follow these rules of engagement will be removed from this public hearing room. And with that being said, we will move to the informational briefing. In this briefing, we will have the government of Guam representative present on the Guam Broadband Infrastructure Five-Year Action Plan. They do have a meeting, like I noted earlier, to attend, so we will allow them to present, move on to questions from my colleagues, and excuse them from this hearing and just to make sure they let me know if we're cutting it close. After we open the floor to industry representatives who have been invited to this briefing to make some comments, but before that, I will go ahead and make some opening remarks on the purpose of this informational briefing. Thank everybody for being here again this afternoon. The opportunity before the government of Guam is a once in a decade, perhaps even a once in a lifetime federal investment to making broadband internet, that is internet speeds of at least 100 megabits per second available islandwide, and I think I didn't stutter on that, 100 megabits per second available islandwide. I commend the administration and the Governor's Office of Infrastructure Planning and Development for leading our local effort to take advantage of this unprecedented funding level. The goal of this hearing is to receive the latest update on these efforts and to hear feedback from our telecommunications companies on the plan to use these funds and how to make the investment more effective for the most number of people. Ladies and gentlemen, Typhoon Marwar made it very, very clear. Our telecommunications infrastructure needs to be more resilient. It has been a long time since the critical infrastructure was tested as rigorously as it did a few months back, and I've seen a lot of feedback from our people wondering why it seems to be taking much longer for our internet companies to get back to normal. Over 20 years ago, in the aftermath of Typhoon Pankseungwa, the lay of the land of the internet was very, very different. From the exponential growth in cellular coverage to the change in consumer habits to use smartphones for internet and data transfers, rather primarily for voice calls, assuming the restoration efforts then and now are similar, it's like comparing apples and oranges. 20 years ago, it was typical for a family to share their primary internet device, which was often a single computer connected to a single modem. Now, every member of our family, from Nananbiha to the littlest of our nennies, has a cellphone or an iPad, while mom and dad watch Netflix, their kids are playing with video games with an opponent from across the world, FaceTiming with a friend who lives in the mainland and researching their science projects with data compiled by global leaders. So you can see there's there's a really big time change. I will say, but despite the challenges and much higher workload, our brothers and sisters who are in our local telecoms works tirelessly and still are to try and get their respective networks back to 100%. And I thank each and every lineman, customer service representative, IT technician, everyone from the top to the bottom of these organizations for working day and night since May to restore your services back to the same and even better levels than Marwar struck. It is my hope, and indeed, I know the goal of this strategic plan, is to make sure our phone and internet services are able to withstand the worst storms Mother Nature can send our way. And outside of being protected from natural disasters, using these federal funds correctly will mean more families are able to work remotely to connect around the world at the speed of light, to have access to the same high-quality access to the internet that is found everywhere elsewhere in the nation. And I'm here today to listen to our experts and stakeholders and reaffirm my commitment to everyone who has shown up that I will help however I can, so that one day, God willing, in the next five years, we will all be able to enjoy a more stable, more affordable, more accessible broadband internet. And with that being said, at this time, I will call up the government of Guam to present that plan, and I understand Ms. Betis and the government. Please come on up. You're more than welcome to bring your team. Again, go ahead and make sure the the mics on. State your name. Go ahead. Please proceed.
Hafaday, Vice Speaker and Madam Chair of the Committee on Human Resources, Haganja Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology, Federal and Foreign Affairs Committee members, Honorable Senators. Before I begin, Madam Chair, I wanted to say a few words about our longtime friend and colleague. Our thoughts are with Tyrone Titanell, who is on sick leave and cannot be here today. Tyrone has shown tremendous dedication to leading Guam's broadband efforts, and we pray for his swift recovery. I am Melissa Betis, the Acting Special Assistant for the Office of Infrastructure Policy and Development, or OIPD, established under the Office of the Governor by Executive Order 22-11 in April last year.
I apologize, Ms. Melissa. One of my colleagues said they need an official name. If you could just state that for the record and what agency you're from.
Again?
Yeah.
Melissa Betis.
Thank you.
I am the...
Please proceed.
That's all you needed? Okay. One of the primary roles of OIPD is to channel federal funds towards enhancing broadband infrastructure, ensuring that underserved and economically disadvantaged sectors of our community don't lag in the digital age. Our office views accessible, reliable, and affordable high-speed internet as no longer a luxury, but a necessity to fully participate in today's digital society. Next slide. At present, OIPD manages several grant programs. Notably, we manage the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment, or BEAT, program and the Digital Equity Program. The BEAT program's ultimate goal is to provide that accessible, reliable, and affordable high-speed internet to every island home. Next slide. In the wake of the digital divide exposed by the COVID-19 pandemic, the bipartisan BEAT program was established with a national allocation of $42.5 billion by the President and Congress. This effort aims to expand broadband connectivity across the U.S.-and territories by 2028. Next slide. Although Guam was initially set to receive a $25 million BEAT allocation, the Leon Guerrero Tenorio administration's efforts showcased to the National Telecommunications and Information Administration and the FCC that traditional metrics didn't reflect Guam's real broadband needs. By emphasizing FCC's latency standards, we secured over $156 million, setting us on a path to achieve islandwide connectivity in five years. Guam will benefit directly from this historic investment through new infrastructure fostering education, healthcare, and economic opportunities in even the most remote pockets of our island community. BEAT funding is administered through the NTIA, a division of the U.S. Department of Commerce. The funding process of this program requires that all documentation and project funding decisions undergo final review and approval by the senior staff of NTIA. Our close collaboration with NTIA is evident in their consistent engagement. They've visited Guam for technical assistance workshops, allowing us to clarify fund usage, and we have regular virtual meetings with them for oversight and guidance. This past August, in line with BEAT grant guidelines, Guam presented its aspirational five-year action plan, which is a living document. This forward-looking plan has already undergone changes based on feedback from NTIA and our local stakeholders. After we finalized the plan, we ensured widespread access to it, sharing with government officials, including members of the Guam Legislature, island journalists, and the community. Guam's plan is readily available on websites like broadband.guam.gov, the Governor's Office portal, and the NTIA's website. Before the unveiling of the five-year plan, we actively pursued engagement from stakeholders, including various community anchor institutions, which are government or nonprofit community support institutions, such as mayor's offices, hospitals, GVB, the airport, and others, and again, the local carriers and the senior staff of the NTIA. While the five-year plan set our aspirations, it was only a prerequisite for the next step, the initial proposal, composed of Volumes 1 and 2. Today, we've launched Volume 1 for a 30-day public review. Some of the language that was in the five-year plan, such as references to publicly-owned infrastructure, have not made it into the initial proposal. Other things, like a commitment to a free internet tier for all, remain in the initial proposal and meet the goals and objectives of the BEAT and Digital Equity Programs. You should all have access to Volume 1 of the initial proposal sent out earlier today. Volume 2 will be released within the next week, and copies also will be shared with you. Throughout this process, we've maintained an open dialogue with BEAT stakeholders, including all local carriers, and value the insights they've contributed. Now, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Carlo Corino, OIPD's BEAT Administrator, who will continue with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Senators. Once again, I am Carlo Corino, with the Office of Policy and Development and the BEAT Program Administrator. Next slide, please. Today, we're talking about a shift from minor upgrades, which would have been the $25 million, to a cohesive, full system overhaul. For years, we focused on short-term solutions. Now, as an island, we can accomplish so much more with the money that we've got. This is about inclusivity, and this is about the future. Next slide. BEAT demands action. The Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, BEAT, is not just another government program. It's a mandate for real action. We're looking at universal improvements. These include expanded access, cutting costs, boosting speeds, educating users, building resilience, supporting communities using data, training workers, driving growth, and joining the global economy. Next slide, please. We aim for real community impact. It's not merely about faster downloads or smoother streaming. Consider remote patient monitoring, something that the medical community has asked about. A feature particularly relevant in our community that allows for immediate, potentially life-saving medical interventions, even when the doctor is miles away. Imagine that. Next slide, please. Let's talk about the digital divide. This isn't some empty buzzword. The digital divide is a concrete barrier standing between our youth and their potential. Imagine a student in Jonya with the same learning resources as a fully-connected student in a high-speed U.S. city. That's what we're aiming for. In the United States, continental United States, the gap is geography; in Guam, the gap is affordability. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. Affordability is a critical pillar. We're exploring nearly all options. Affordability ensures sustainability. It ensures that the benefits of this program reach every household. The BEAT program does not encourage the government to compete with the private sector. We need partners. Our approach to public-private partnerships, our role complements existing infrastructure. It doesn't compete with it. Next slide, please. The Five-Year Action Plan. Our action plan isn't a wish list. It's a carefully considered roadmap. This plan, ladies and gentlemen, is the result of 38 weeks of intensive community outreach. It incorporates diverse feedback, including innovative, sustainable solutions, like making our infrastructure both green and resilient. It is mandated by the NTIA. It is shaped by stakeholder input. The initial phase of the five-year effort is what it was. Modern internet would be more affordable and accessible, and the five-year plan is aligned with the BEAT's core objectives. Next slide, please. Okay, transparency isn't an afterthought. It's built into the process. We've put our plans up for scrutiny among local tech experts and civic groups. This isn't just our plan, it's Guam's plan. As a roadmap, you can see, we had a 270-day period from December 1 to August 28. 38 weeks of outreach, including 24 meetings with carriers. The draft was released to carriers on August 17, 2023, and the draft was released to the legislature and the public August 18. That's a 10-day voluntary commentary period, which we did not have to do, but we felt was in the best interest of incorporating into the final version that we sent to the NTIA on August 28, 2023. We have held 24 meetings with carriers, many sessions with community leaders, the plan. It's grassroots, it's collaborative, it's responsive to the real needs of real people. Next slide, please. Okay, what's in the plan? This is about more than just wires and cables. It's about creating opportunities, more consideration for all families. It can it's an ecosystem of opportunities. It's a snapshot of our vision and goals. It outlined the current landscape and the key challenges that we face in Guam. It talks about partnerships for community involvement, identification of key areas that require attention, barriers to broadband expansion and solutions, priority actions, estimated timelines, oversight and evaluation mechanism mechanisms, and additional project proposals and support. Next slide, please. The Big Takeaways. Universal access isn't some unreachable ideal. It's a pressing necessity. There's a reason that the MCC and NTIA believe a plan that costs Guamanians over $150 today is considered just the basic level of service. Imagine a financially constrained UOG student gaining the ability to participate in real-time work, video editing collaboratively with professionals across the globe. We have the talent, but do they have the means? And they can do this all from their comfort of their own home. We've talked about reducing Guam's brain drain. This is one solution. Next slide, please. Since releasing Volume 1, flexibility and adaptability are at the core of our strategy. We have been quick to reconsider many things, including our approach to data centers and middle-mile plans, in response to valuable carrier feedback. This plan is a living document, ever-evolving and ever-improving. Next slide, please. So what's next? Carefully considered yet ambitious steps are on the horizon, guided by community input. We are refining to find better solutions. It starts our vision for long-term strategy. Soon, we unveil proposals, Volume 1 and 2. Volume 1 was unveiled today. It includes plans that lower the cost of internet for all of Guam. It drives conversations that count, and I can say, after the release of the five-year plan, we have had the most productive conversations. And it demands bold action for the good of all islanders. Next slide, please. Initial proposal, our version 1 draft, many things have changed since. Our initial proposal is not set in stone, or rather, our five-year plan is not set in stone. It's a foundation upon which to build. It's a starting point that we have carved from extensive community consultations. It lists unserved and underserved locations, defines community anchor institutions, includes a list of anchor institutions, outlines the challenge process, and it is currently under NTIA review. This is Volume 1 proposal now. And it puts out the call for public comment. Next slide, please. Today, we're opening up a 30-day window for public comments for the initial proposal, Volume 1. It starts today and it ends November 30. It was emailed to everyone present, or it should have been. Comments can be submitted via the website or via broadband@gwam.gov. You can also find it on the government public notice portal. We're ready to listen, whether it's feedback from a town hall, an in-person conversation, or via email. So let's build a more connected Guam together. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before this body today, and we are concludes our remarks.
Thank you very much. Before I get anybody else, I'll go ahead and open the floor to my colleagues for questions, and I'll go ahead and start. I know you talked about the action plans and timelines. You had it up on the on the presentation. When will the proposed five-year action plan be submitted to NTIA for its approval? Please speak into the mic, Ms. Melissa. Turn on the mic. Thank you.
Hi. The five-year action plan was submitted, so we've it's now the Volume 1, 1 and 2 of the initial proposal are due to the NTIA by December 28.
December 28?
Yes.
2023?
That's correct.
Okay. Have any comments from the local ISPs or any other respondents been incorporated into the plan? And can you give some examples of changes to the initial draft plan?
Absolutely. For instance, we have changed our stance on data centers, on whether building a public one is in our public interest. We are no longer as firm about a publicly-owned middle mile, as the carriers have been very forthright in showing us what they have. And this, again, this is a conversation that happened after the five-year plan was released. And so, you know, I commend them on being so open and telling us exactly what they have, and we hope that they give us more information that will make it into the initial proposals and inform our plans going forward.
Is it correct to say the NTIA has to approve any future changes to the five-year plan? And if so, what is the process to do so?
The NTIA does not need to approve changes to the five-year action plan.
Thank you. And then, is your present in your presentation, it was indicated a 30-day comment period begins today, right? November 1. To be clear, is the document to be reviewed, a revised version of the initial plan?
No. The what was released today was initial proposal, Volume 1. This follows the five-year plan. These are the NTIA requirements that will outline what we will be building going forward and how we will conduct certain things, such as the challenge process or the subgrantee selection process.
Okay, so Senator Sinagastin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, just reviewing all the your information briefing that you've presented, it talks about doing the doing the broadband. Are there any security requirements? You know, when technology is out there, everybody wants to get into it. I'm just concerned about that. Are there any is there any indication? I don't see anything that deals with security. And maybe you can speak about it. And maybe you can speak about it.
Uh, under BEAT, cybersecurity is not one of the focuses of it because there are other cybersecurity plans. We cannot duplicate other federal funding for, that, uh, is being used for that. So that is not one of the major considerations for BEAT. But a cybersecurity element does have to be incorporated into whatever is created.
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand that. It's not something you're focused on, but there are other programs for cybersecurity. And when that exists, then that automatically has to be, has to be put in the system. Correct? That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I have an understanding. Now, I, I, I see a lot of the, uh, the, the, uh, commercial industry folks are here. Are, are they, are they? Are they in support of this program, what you guys got? Are they in support of it? Are they in support of the program you guys are pushing? I just want to make sure everybody's in, involved in it because 156 million is a lot of money. And I want to make sure everybody gets a piece of the pie. There's no one that should get more, more than the other. So I'm just curious. I'm really, sharing is caring. It's only one item.
Senator, you know, we see the carriers as key stakeholders and, you know, they're, they're a key part of the successful implementation of the BEAT program.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to hear something positive. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Tadejui, I give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, or Madam Chair. Um, thank you so much for being here to testify. What kind of connection do you have with this broadband with the Office of Technology? What kind of collaboration are you in with them? With OT?
Um, well, as you can see, Frank Luhon is here, uh, from OTech. We have been in communication with OTech since the very beginning. We use them as a, a guiding light and for expertise. For instance, when we do-
Speak into the mic a little bit more.
Oh, sorry. We use them for their guiding light and their expertise. Uh, for instance, when we have more technical meetings, we hold them in the OTech office so that everybody can benefit from Frank's wisdom and also from his perspective. That is something that not everybody has. A long perspective on Guam's, um, technology and communications is something that everybody, even those who are the technology experts, need to hear. And we greatly value OTech's input.
Um, Senator, if I may, I, Mr. Luhon is also here. He is also a part of the agenda to speak right after.
Okay. So this, this broadband, um, the funding that's, the source where it's coming from, from the federal government, correct? So are other jurisdictions receiving the same kind of funding? I mean, of course, they're larger, so they'll probably get more. But what is some of the jurisdictions are receiving this case, same kind of funding? And are you working with any of these jurisdictions to see what they're doing with this money and how they're distributing it to the, uh, private sector?
Since the program has started, we have maintained communications with all the Pacific Island territories. Uh, they received similar funding, which was 1.25 million for planning, and had a minimum allotment of 25 million. Through the efforts between us, CNMI, American Samoa, and others, we have been able to lobby the FCC. Well, maybe lobby is not the right word. But we have been able to communicate forcefully with the FCC and the NTIA to make our case that our territories deserve more. And as such, we received the amount. We have Saipan received over 80 million.
What about jurisdictions in the U.S.?
Jurisdictions in the U.S. had a $5 million planning grant. And their minimum allotment was $100 million. Guam, in its award, received more money than six other states.
Okay, so back to my question. Have you worked with any jurisdictions in the U.S. to find out how they've been utilizing? Or is this program like, um, the same timeframe as you are? Because you're saying you're opening now, uh, November 1st is your 30-day period. Um, have these other jurisdictions already started this program? Or are you just starting on November 1st?
The dates given at, for the start of the program were different for the territories than they were for the rest of these states.
So we're all starting at the same time?
Yes. But however, the, uh, going from the initial proposal phase after the five-year, uh, action plan, we are now on the same timeline.
But, explain that again? The five-year action plan is, you're on, now on the same timeline as?
Right.
As what?
Uh, as, as, as the rest of the United States.
Oh, okay, so it's a little bit behind. The 159, I mean, 156.8 million, does that mean you're getting only 25 a year? Is this only a five-year plan? Is it five years?
It is a five-year plan.
Okay. With the allotment of how much every year?
We-
Every year, so it's about, what, 25 million for the next five years?
Uh, actually, we've been encouraged that when we make our funding request, this is encouraged by the NTIA, to request the full amount during the first year. So that way, we have that in force to back our commitments.
So you requested, what's the probability of getting it?
Uh, at this point, it seems 100% because they asked everybody to do so.
Okay, they're gonna give it to you print, the whole 150, but you have to utilize it within the next five years? Is that how it rolls?
Yes.
Okay. Any other funding besides this 156 million that you have given to any of the private sector businesses uh, to increase their broadband or to assist them in, um, broadening their broadband? Has this office given any funding whatsoever or assisted in any fund of funding for other, um, private entities?
Any funding that goes to any businesses has to go toward the, um, the goals of the BEAT program. We will, after the approval of the final proposal, put forth several, um, uh, several programs for which we will put out the call, RFPs, for sub-grantees who will receive money to perform the actions that will give universal service to island.
But this is, this money, I'm talking about a money that is not the 156?
No.
Nothing from your office?
No.
No other federal grants that were given to any of these private entities to help them assist them?
Not, not from our office, but they did receive from the NTIA.
Okay, so there is money that was given out, right? AHA, do you keep on tabs on that?
We are-
Will that make a difference when submitting some of this money to the private sector, knowing they already received money from the federal government?
There are limitations on what we can give. Uh, for instance, there is a USDA grant that was given to, uh, one of the carriers to provide connectivity in the South. We cannot use NTIA funds to duplicate efforts.
Okay, yeah, and you keep on tabs on that?
Yes.
What's your website? Is it on here? Do you have your website?
It's broadband.guam.gov.
Okay, I see it here. Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadejui. Now, there's no other colleagues here that ask any questions. I would like to add into the record, uh, an email from Courtney Dalzer, who is the Deputy Director of the Federal Government's Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. The message sent on October 31st begins with thanking the office staff for hosting a team on NTIA on Guam in September, right? Uh, it continues, "Your work on behalf of the people of Guam is incredibly important. We appreciate the work relationship we have with your team and the diligence you bring to this important effort. Your detailed questions in our technical assistance meetings drove that point home. We also very much appreciated you making time for the meetings we jointly held with the leading broadband providers in Guam, which we found frank and productive. We look forward to a formal submission of your initial proposal after you have published it and sought public comment, and Ethan can reveal drafts and provide feedback as part of our pre-submission review in the interim. We will continue to work in collaboration with your team to ensure Guam's initial proposal meets the high standards of the BEAT program." And, um, thank you very much. I know you may have to sneak out sooner than later for the next appointment. And, uh, I, I know that OTech is also here, and I have a bunch of other, uh, industry representatives who want to speak. So I will allow them to speak. But, uh, we'll, um, with respect to the administration, call Mr. Frank Luhon and OTech also up to speak. So thank you for your presentation this afternoon.
Um, Madam Chair, I just asked the, the, um, the folks that, when you do that plan after 30 days, I'm gonna ask the Vice Speaker to call you back to make sure all the inputs are incorporated. Hopefully, everything's incorporated and everybody works on the same sheet of music. Thank you.
I do apologize, Senator Sinagastin. I should have noted that. I had that in my notes here to repeat. But thank you very much. Yes, most definitely, uh, Ms. Melissa, Mrs. Bettis, make sure that that gets incorporated. Thank you. Mr. Luhon? And again, to the, the industry representatives who have not, uh, signed in, please do so, uh, with Allen if you haven't signed up for any oral testimonies. And if you have written testimonies, you can also submit if you wish not to speak. Mr. Luhon, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is, uh, Frank Luhon. I'm the Chief Technology Officer of the Government of Guam, and I'm also the Director of the Office of Technology. Thank you, uh, honorable members of the Guam Legislature Committee on Human Resources, Madam Chairman. Um, I'm honored to present before this esteemed committee to express my resounding endorsement of the Guam Broadband Office and its pivotal five-year action plan in alignment with President Biden's transformative Internet for All initiative. As the Chief Technology Officer, I'm acutely aware of the complex challenges faced by our island residents and businesses concerning Internet access and encompassing issues of latency, affordability, the tyranny of distance, and the increasing critical aspect of cyber, cybersecurity. Latency remains a persistent hurdle, disrupting the seamless transfer of information and impeding critical services. This delay in data transmission impacts various facets of daily life, hindering real-time communications, remote work, educational opportunities, and access to essential services. This issue not only impedes technological advancements, but also creates frustration and limitations in both personal and professional spheres. The affordability of high-speed Internet is another substantial barrier for many of our island residences and businesses. The high costs associated with quality Internet service place undue financial strain on families, individuals, and enterprises. These financial constraints exacerbate existing social economic disparities and limit equitable access to the digital landscape, hindering progress and growth. The geographic remoteness known as the tyranny of distance compounds these challenges. Physical separation from network hubs and mainland, and the mainland intensifies connectivity issues, leading to increased latency and reduced reliability. The expenses and logistical difficulties of laying infrastructure across our diverse and geographical scattered communities amplify the challenge of providing universal high-speed Internet access to all, all places of Guam. Additionally, in the rapidly evolving digital landscape, cybersecurity is a vital concern. With increased reliance on digital technologies, the need to safeguard our residences and businesses from cyber threats has become paramount. Ensuring robust cybersecurity measures is not only essential for protecting sensitive data, but also for preserving the trust and security of our digital infrastructure. The recent allocation of 156.8 million in federal funds from the National Telecommunications and Information Administration to Guam's broadband office marks a significant milestone in our pursuit of digital equity. This funding represents an extraordinary opportunity to bridge the gap in Internet accessibility and addresses the pain points of latency, affordability, the tyranny of distance, and cybersecurity. The Guam Broadband Office's comprehensive five-year action plan, reinforced by substantial federal support, stands as a testament to our collective commitment to deliver affordable, high-speed Internet to every household and business on our island. It is a crucial step toward overcoming the hurdles of latency, affordability, and distance, and ensuring a robust cybersecurity measure to, to fortify our digital landscape. I urge each esteemed member of this committee to wholeheartedly support this transformative plan by investing in universal access to quality, affordable Internet and prioritizing cybersecurity. We empower our residents and businesses to navigate the challenges posed by distance, affordability, and latency. Thank you for your attention and consideration of this paramount matter that significantly impacts the growth and prosperity of our island's community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luhon. Uh, Senator Sinagastin, any questions for him? Thank you very much for your presentation and your continued collaboration and working closely with the government, uh, with, with the industry partners. At this time, um, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call the industry partners up here, and, in the order that they came in. So Dan Tidinko and Roland Sartesa from GTA. Uh, I also have, I know, it says Mike Smith and Rod, Rod and Bus, please. You're more than welcome to come up, or you guys want to do it singly? Uh, let's try and fill the table up here. Yeah, uh, that, that's Dokomo. And ITNE, I have, uh, Jim Oli King, yes, he's up. And then John Day. And then Steve, are you coming up? You're more than welcome. Did I miss anybody? Did I miss any industry? Mark, you're more, anyone else willing to, wanting to come up? We can probably pull an extra chair. I, I'd say I'd give courtesies to GTA because they were once a government entity, but it, it, it was in the order that they signed in. So with that being said, uh, thank you, uh, folks and gentlemen for, for being here, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, I will open the floor and give, uh, GTA. I'll start with GTA and then just work, uh, with the way it was signed in. So it's GTA, then Dokomo, then ITNE, and PDS. Fair enough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Manofade. I'm Dan Tidinko, Executive Vice President for GTA Teluguam Holdings. Alongside me here this morning, or this afternoon, is Roland Sartesa, our CEO and President for GTA as well. We're pleased to see that the Government of Guam unveiled its Volume One. We're looking for vol, looking forward to Volume Two. We'll be doing our own assessments of the particular plans and commenting on them. As you can see, there's a very robust and competitive telecom industry here on island. And we've made, Roland will go into a little bit as to the significant investments each of our companies have made. Um, there's a particular reason why 19 years ago, the Government of Guam stated public policy, namely this body, to proceed forth with privatization of telecommunications on Guam. And that was with the privatization of the Guam Telephone Authority, which was the last publicly-owned telephone, uh, entity, uh, government-owned and operated entity. So since then, since 2004, we've been operating on a very, very competitive landscape. And residents and businesses on island have their choice of, um, operators to provide the services and products they deliver. But we're looking forward to commenting on it. We're glad that Senator Sinagastin and you are asking, um, the, um, office, broadband office to come back to ensure that the comments- to ensure that the comments that we have are incorporated in Volumes One and Volume Two down the line before the final December 27 deadline. I'm going to turn it over to Roland.
I'll just keep my comments brief. We all had an opportunity to meet with the government when the five-year plan came out, and we also met with the NTIA folks collectively. And this is just sort of a summary of some of the talking points that we shared with them. Most of our comments have been documented. We wrote to the broadband office, we wrote to the NTIA office, and I think our letters have also been submitted to this body. First, you know, we're big supporters of grants. GTA is a recipient of the NTIA BIP grant, which we're about ready to execute in concert with Government of Guam. We're solving the latency problem for our network, our customers, Government of Guam, and potentially our carrier partners here, if they so wish, to interconnect with us. That's a $1.4 million grant that we've got, and we're well underway, and we look to execute that hopefully by Q1 of next year. We also received the USDA Reconnect 3 grant. It's $29.7 million, and we're building fiber to every home down south, which involves or includes Agate all the way to Jotnia. And that's going to be every home connected to fiber and pass with fiber. It's a significant investment. A lot of us that have been building network here on Guam recognize that it's quite an expensive area to build in. It's dense, sorry, sparsely populated. It's, there's obviously the population, but the diversity of the land is just cost prohibitive for us to do those kinds of infrastructure. So, we're fortunate that the USDA has granted GTA this particular bucket of money. The comment on the $157 million, you know, as we dug into it, what we recognized was we think that there was an incorrect characterization of all of us on how our network represents latency. And now that we understand how NTIA has defined that, and really, and I could speak for us and probably the main carriers here that support customers, the latency to the content networks that most of us want to look at, which is Netflix and Google and Facebook, all of us have all of that network on our fabric today in Guam, and most of our customers are less than 10 milliseconds to get to those networks collectively. We're encouraged that NTIA changed its definition, but we think that if it had changed its definition prior to the award, Guam probably may not have gotten that much money, quite frankly, because of that characterization. But nonetheless, that's already evolving. With respect to the unserved and underserved characterizations that the NTIA defines, and they're specific to how they define speeds and coverage, and all of us report into these FCC broadband maps. So, the first is unserved, which is a speed threshold of 25 down, 3 megabits up. And fortunately for Guam, and you know, I could speak for us as well as our partners, we've all been investing vigorously in the networks over the last, you know, 20, 30 years. In the context of the underserved, which is 100 megabit down, 20 meg up, the island is currently served with 87% coverage. In other words, despite what Government of Guam may characterize in their document, Guam's already served. Okay? So, that's, and that's the definition coming out of NTIA. So, I think it's important for us to make sure that when we look at the other jurisdictions, like one of the senators was asking, how did the other state jurisdictions do this? Every jurisdiction that we reviewed, their first source of truth is going to be the FCC broadband data map for that. The other point is, in the initial, sorry, in the five-year plan and the things that we were guiding Gov Guam is, we think there's been an inaccurate representation of all of our networks. All of us have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in the network. We've got, you know, likely lots of fiber, lots of availability of network. Some of us connect community anchor institutions today, and certainly a lot of us are already delivering broadband service. So, to characterize that we're not delivering a quality of service, it's just a mischaracterization, we believe, in terms of how we're doing our business. I mean, we all take that very seriously in terms of our investment, and certainly everything around customer experience is first and foremost to a lot of us. So, we think that's another important point to make. We welcome the digital equity, the workforce development initiatives that are tucked underneath this plan. We already know this as carriers, that we lack the workforce here on the island, the talent on the island. A lot of us are already recruiting from off-island to fill in gaps that we need. So, we welcome any investment that the program can make, particularly in the population that we serve today. We're big advocates of the affordability aspect of it. In fact, GTA leads the way in terms of the number of subscribers in the current plan today, which is the affordability connectivity program. And we just do that simply because we're fitting it out with people. We have a dedicated force that serves the mayor, the community centers, that go to all of the institutions here that where there's, where the constituents are seeking public assistance. We're actually involved in those areas to try and capture those residents, those applicants that can avail of this program. And I think today, the latest things I think we saw is, we currently serve about 80% of Guam's coverage, which is still low in the context of the national average of the affordability And then just lastly, you know, as far as the community anchor institutions, today, you know, a lot of us connect schools, connect government agencies, connect community centers on fiber today. So, again, the idea that somehow we're behind, it's just not correct. And we, when we talked to the broadband office, we challenged them to take a look at the network footprints that we serve, the services that we provide, and I think it would paint a completely different picture in terms of the coverage that we have. And then I'll just lastly say, the final comment is, we support investing in new architecture, new investments for fiber, et cetera, and we look forward to what this initial proposal looks like. We just read it, all of us got it about 30 minutes before we came in. So, we'll take a look and review, and we appreciate coming back here and reporting back into the body in terms of our approach to that document. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roland. I'll go ahead and recognize DOCOMO. So, Mr. Boss and Mike, you're more than welcome to proceed.
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and Senator Sinagastin for being here and inviting us here and having this review. I also want to thank the broadband office because although, you know, we didn't agree with a lot of the points that we read in the aspirational five-year plan that they've put forth at the beginning, the fact that they went to bat for Guam and to get us this kind of funding is something that is, I think, everybody here is very appreciative. This is really, and I'll probably say this a few times, but it is really a rare opportunity that we can have this kind of investment, to be able to use this kind of funding to really transform this island and the telecommunications infrastructure of the island. I also maybe just answer, one thing I wanted to say is, I agree with pretty much everything that Roland just presented. I think the state of things on this island are much better than a lot of places. You have more choices here than a lot of similar-sized communities across the U.S. And I think that competition amongst us all, you know, keeps the very best services available to everybody. And I think that's something to keep in mind because, you know, a lot of people say this, like to talk, sorry, okay, so a lot of people like to talk about the digital divide, and the availability of homes, you know, past, you know, or access to affordable broadband is pretty extensive in Guam. In fact, by certain measures, there are no underserved areas of Guam. And so, we, in looking at this, I want to keep my comments brief, but we see an opportunity here. Well, let me first say, talk about Mauar. You know, we went through, you know, a typhoon in 2018 in Saipan, Typhoon U2, and now in Guam with Typhoon Mauar. And we, you know, understand, I think as good as anybody, the difficulty of that. And, you know, it's been, some of our vulnerabilities have been exposed through that. One is that we only have, when a similar storm or big weather event happens in the states, you see a bunch of trucks from neighboring states on the interstate lined up on their way in as a convoy to help stand it back up. We have none of that availability, and we were very much constrained in how, what the resources we could deploy on getting that thing stood back up. So, resiliency is something that, you know, we're all acutely aware of and how we can get that done. And the answer to that question is really to put our networks underground. Now, we all have some underground networks, some more than others, but we, it's a goal we all have, but it's an incredibly expensive proposition. And, you know, I just say really quickly, one thing, when, after Typhoon U2, I explained what had happened, and a lot of the wood poles up there were flattened. And when that happened, my wife said, "Well, why in the world isn't everything in Saipan underground?" You know, we know we're in, we have typhoons that come through here all the time. And I said, "Well, yeah, we could do that, but we'd never make money for the next 25 years because it would be so expensive to do." So, we're always weighing that, the, how much can we invest in that resiliency versus, you know, we still have to turn a profit, right? So, this, again, comes back around to this opportunity to do something like that. So, for us, we're big advocates of the undergrounding, and not only undergrounding, but also doing that completely with fiber optics. So, there's what's called a PON network, Passive Optical Network, that will add, just really bring Guam into, really become the leader in this technology. And that's really scalable. What that will do is provide resiliency, will provide affordability, because it's a lot cheaper to operate that network than it is to our other networks. And we'll be able to meet all of, we feel, all of the NTIA-required thresholds, both affordability, quality, and resiliency. So, I think that that's our proposal. We think that this funding is adequate to be able to do that and to provide that availability to really every home and every business in Guam. So, we're pretty excited about that. Just wanted to touch, before I stop, you talked about cybersecurity. We can, we're probably maybe a little more qualified to talk about that since having gone through what we have this year. This is something that I know that everybody here is very, very focused on. We have a lot of support from our federal partners to help us with that, to make sure that we do that. We're all spending, I know we're spending a lot of money on that. That cybersecurity aspect is not necessarily built into the infrastructure. Us as ISPs, we all are very, very active in doing that on top of that infrastructure, so that we are managing the cybersecurity for all of our customer base. So, I think that's going to be addressed in this. This is really talking about the infrastructure itself, but, you know, we will be sure to layer that in to make sure that that security is part of that. So, I just wanted to make that point as well. And again, thank you for letting us come here and comment. We're looking forward to some more concrete proposals that we can offer in response to this latest information request. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Go ahead and open it to Mike also. Yeah, you're okay. I'll now, thank you very much. I'll now acknowledge ITNE.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker and Senator, for the rare opportunity for Roland, Rod, and I to agree on so many items. I'll be very short because I do agree on a lot of the main areas that they've covered. I think in Guam, this is a tremendous blessing, the amount of money that we've been able to allocate. And you can see by the depth of the operators on this island, we're, again, for a market this size, we are very strong with people who know how to do this. There's, I've been to lots of the NTIA discussions, a variety of discussions. There's nothing I've heard that we don't know how to do. There's no, nothing that needs to be reinvented. We all have thousands of subscribers on internet, thousands of Wi-Fi subscribers all over the, you know, variety of areas. It is expensive to build and provide service here. Monetary considerations and how we manage that for lower-income constituents is, I think, a significant thing we need to look at. But what we want to provide and what we can provide, there's nothing that we can't do that what we, for what we've talked about for this BEAD program. We know how to do it. It's, again, it's how we look at price adjustments and price modifications for lower income, and it's also the spreading the costs to raise the level. I mean, I've been here running ITNE for eight years, and I've seen tremendous, by across the board, all the operators, investment and improvements in network performance. Mauar was a tough learning experience for all of us, and there's always things we can do to become more robust and harden the network and improve what we're doing. But also, all of us are making significant investments in tens of millions of dollars on our own every year that we need to do in conjunction with this, so it's all additive and moving in a common direction. But there's nothing we're trying to get done. We talked about anchor institutions that we couldn't do like immediately. I mean, again, there's no, nothing new that has to be invented for what we're trying to accomplish to improve accessibility, data speed. When we talk about how we're measuring latency, again, Guam's here, California is where it is. We aren't moving it, right? We all try to host as much material, Netflix, YouTube, on island, again, to make the end-user experience as positive as possible. And on the cybersecurity, I think all of us, I mean, cybersecurity is not a Gov Guam-level challenge. We're all in it every day, working with all of our customers and the FBI, the federal agencies. So, we're, it's not something new we're adding, it's something we're embedded with, and it's going to have to continue to be involved with. That's it, and appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Jim. Steve?
Thank you. I just, a little bit of a follow-up. We look forward to working with Gov Guam. We worked with the broadband office in helping get that extra additional funds, and we've been working with the BSP on our BIP grant, which is going to bring, you know, additional connectivity to Guam. And as Roland asserted, if you look at the maps, I think you find that the coverage of Guam is pretty remarkable in terms of what's covered, in terms of served and underserved. I mean, I think all the carriers do a great job in providing service to Guam, and, you know, there is an affordability issue, and, but that's not related to the rates because the rates really compare to what's offered in the states, despite the fact that we have a much more narrow, limited market because we don't have that many folks here and we're far away. But we work with programs like Roland mentioned, the ACP, Lifeline, and we need to look at opportunities like that. We look forward to reviewing Volume One. We hope they took our concerns to heart because I don't think, like, the government shouldn't be involved in providing broadband. I think we do a great job of providing it, all of us here at the table, and we look forward to spending this money to make Guam better.
Can I make one more point?
Sure, Jim.
On free service, you know, when we talk about free Wi-Fi, free for everyone, right? I was with Motorola for like 25 years, and we tried this in some city environments, low-income. You need to, like, when the money runs out, you know, there's got to be a way of continuing to fund free service in the overall plan because when you have free things and then the funding runs out, the performance tends to degrade.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Day?
Thank you.
PDS.
Yeah, Pacific Data Systems. My name's John Day. I'm the President of Pacific Data. We're the smallest of the group up here, so I'm sitting at the end, close to the door. the door. But we also, again, there's a lot of things we agree with that's being said today. First of all, is the broadband office has been very transparent, very open, and very willing to accept comments and suggestions to the five-year plan as well as Volume One, and we haven't seen Volume Two yet. But Tyrone and his staff have been very open. When the NTIA folks were out here, they were very available for discussions and we thought that was good because getting them out here really allowed them to see how far Guam is from the mainland as well as understand some of the unique problems of Guam. We think the BEED program is going to be transformative, that it will affect the public, it'll affect the government, and it'll affect everybody at this table up here. It reminds me of a similar, not, probably not as significant, but similar time in 1996 when long-distance rates came under deregulation. I was here, used to go down to RCA to the public booth to make phone calls. How many people can remember that? It cost $12 for a three-minute call, right? Yeah, it went back to the 80s, right? Well, today, long distance is free, okay? We can expect that kind of impact from broadband. It's going to be significant. And it's going to have an impact on everybody up here at this table. I don't know who's going to be here, but I know there used to be a company called RCA on Guam, they're gone. Used to be a company called Verizon on Guam, they're gone. WorldCom, they're gone. Used to be a government agency called Guam Telephone Authority, it's gone. Or it's different now. But bottom line is that this program, if it lives up to its goals and objectives, is it will turn things upside down, but for the better. And there's things that the government can do to make that transition easier. Streamlining and building permits. Right now, it takes a significant amount of time to get a building permit for construction. Changing of regulations regarding archaeological clearances and other types of clearances when the road or the area's already been disturbed, it's a waste of time to go through that and it's very expensive. Also, building into all of new road construction, community conduits, conduits that are owned by the government that are available for lease to carriers so we don't have to go up and dig up the road again. Fiber optic cable doesn't need a lot of space. It's not like the old days where you had to put in these big duck banks. Today, we can do all that in about a two-inch conduit. So the government mandating that to public works projects would do, go a long way in making these projects cheaper and faster and more maintainable in the future. The other thing is call before you dig. You know, this is something in the states, it's pretty standard. Before you start digging in a roadway or in an area, you call and make sure you understand what's down below you. On Guam, we don't have that. We go through this crazy process where we contact everybody on Guam that might have something buried and say, "Hey, I'm going to dig over here. Do you want to come out and check before I dig?" So there's some things that we can do, the things that the legislature can do, changes that can be brought about to help these changes go faster, cost less money, and last longer as well. So again, we think that it's going to be a wild ride for the next five years as Guam uses this money, and it's going to have a huge impact. And we look forward to it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Day. It's funny that you shared some of the solutions to the things that the government can do as that was going to be my first question since I had all of you guys, all the industry partners up here, that, you know, we did as a committee, heard bits and pieces about the regulatory issues you all face as it relates to the getting the permits and digging and upgrading, you know, for upgrading your infrastructure. And what can you do or what can we do? And can you share with this committee what is happening and the frustrations? And, you know, I want to say that Senator Sinagastian, I asked him to come here with me today because he's the money man, he's a part of this committee, and he's literally, he's been committed to that. And seeing you here today and knowing that we all have an opportunity to make it right by Guam, and even hearing with what we have presently today and what we've overcome and the resiliency that we've done to recover from the storms, what more can we do to make it right? And that's why I, that question, I mean, you shared some of the concerns, but I want to hear, all of you guys have the same concerns or is there any more missing that you should add to this committee so that we can work on it together? Because this is key. I mean, everybody, even two-year-olds have devices with them. And I wasn't exaggerating when I said from the man-uncle to the nannies, right? So I guess, do I start down? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I have something to add. I'm really glad that John brought that up because I think we also feel the same way that there are so many things that are impediments to us getting this done. You know, I just wanted to make one quick comment and I know, Vice Speaker, when we met the other day, I mentioned this to you, but, you know, when the storm hit, the first, the very next morning, the first thing we did was made sure our people were safe, made sure that our network was operating, that our backup generators were good to go. The very next thing we did was went and get GPA set up to make sure that they could communicate. And what happens is that people don't realize, but then, but then, and maybe this was unique to Docomo, but then, you know what? We went down to get gas for our generators and we couldn't get gas because we were not considered first responders. The reality is, none of the first responders can operate without us, right? So we're really the first of the first responders. So along those same lines that John brought up, you know, I think that, and, you know, of course, this is going to sound self-serving for us when we say this, but I think we need to be treated a little differently than just every other private business on this island. Even though we're private companies, collectively, we provide a vital utility for this island. And I think everybody you interview will tell you that because we used to be called service providers and now we're really utilities in their minds, right? Because their power and their connectivity are the very first two things that they're thinking about. So I think that, you know, across the board, if the legislature could have that in their mind as they're looking at accessibility for a public land spot where we have a tower or any other thing like that, we shouldn't be, I think, we should not be treated just like any for-profit business because I think we blur that line and it's something that's vital. So I think that, you know, we appreciate if you consider that in each one of these areas and we're happy to get together and propose that, I think.
If I may, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Speaker.
Thank you.
There's, oh, John Day and I rarely ever agree on anything. But the one thing that he mentioned here with regards to the building permits and the construction permits, I think it'd be worthwhile, and not just worthwhile, but it'd probably very, very beneficial for the entire island community, particularly our industry, if we sat down and did some legislation with you concerning streamlining the clearance process and moving forth, particularly on areas which are already previously disturbed. We've had discussions with ITNE when they received their grant for $11 million, is it 11 mil? For their build-out down south with their NTIA grant, similarly with our $29.7 million, which Roland alluded to for down south. And we're like encountering some instances where, "Well, wait a minute, this is already our infrastructure that we already have buried, so we're just going back into these areas which we have been previously disturbed." And we have to go through this onerous, expensive, laborious, costly process. And it takes away the money that we can actually put back into the programs for the benefit of the intended recipients, you know, that's the community. But if you guys can help us, we could, we have some ideas on how to get over some of these requirements with regards to Mr. Boss's suggestion on prioritization. There already is telecom services prioritization that's mandated by the FCC. The local government just has to implement it. We are in line, at the front of the line with regards to restoration of our services to ensure that everybody else can be able to respond. But there's some things that I think that we could probably do together collaboratively and I don't think you're going to get much pushback aside from the agencies that may oversee this.
You know, one thing along the same lines on the permitting and the archaeological work, going right down six inches from a road that's already disturbed, it's just our ability to deliver to the consumers, to the citizens of Guam, where there's something good we're trying to bring. And we'd like to bring it as quickly as we can.
One good example is, there have been a few instances where we have what are called carrier of last resort obligations. So somebody will call us up and say, "My mother wants a landline. She doesn't want this, she doesn't want internet, she wants a darned landline." So we have to go out and we have to get the clearances and the permits to dig to get to that neighborhood. But we're hung up with regards to being able to get those services installed and activated for Tan Maria. And the son says, "Look, my mom wants to be able to use a landline because she doesn't want any of us living with her, but she wants to use the landline and she wants to call 911 or she wants to call the fire department or somebody if there's an emergency." We're being held up because of regulatory red tape. So those are things for you guys to consider. I think you guys can grasp that even more.
And, yeah, and again, just based on that, right? My next question was going to be, any recommendations to help with regulatory obstacles with the intent of lowering costs? You know, I know that one carrier just today sent out a letter to subscribers saying they were raising internet prices. And I think we, as a government, need to realize while you're private companies, you all provide a critical service and should be looked at as critical infrastructure. So we realize that. So that was my next question to you guys was, are there any recommendations you can give? And I know that even, we've got still a couple of hours left. I literally think that it is key and important that we hear from you guys to see how we can mediate or even help assist, cut through that bureaucracy. And Danny, you're no stranger to this, you know, you've been on this side of the fence in as far as working for the legislature and looking at policy and that's why we're here to listen. I always try and not make this a confrontational or contested matter. I think if we all come together and seeing all of you guys here, really, the island of Guam is probably saying, "Wow." You know, you guys are all at the same table at the same time, even with competition because you want to help make a difference. So, you know, if we can't answer any of that right now, my office is open to that. Jim?
One, I mean, one area that's gotten a lot of discussion since MaWR was power availability, commercial power, GPA, I mean, got hit as hard as any of us did, right? But if I look at my customer, our customer base, since June, like, probably the most downtime that Dave experienced has been with the rolling power outages. So power stability at, not just our switching areas, but at the cell sites, again, maybe we use some BEED money for all of us to put in larger generators at some of these remote sites that, like, during MaWR, I had 30 portable generators that we were driving around all over and setting up that maybe we put in things and fence it in so it doesn't get lost for power stability. But ongoing power is a challenge that all of us have to deal with. And as we're still going through the sort of rolling brownouts, I, every day, I just hope everything comes back up the way it was after the brownout's over.
Anybody else? I want to say on the topic of cybersecurity, how can the government of Guam step up its role in partnering with you also that the end-user, the residents, are better protected? And I know that Senator Joe also had that intent. So is there any thing that the government can do to step up? And please, I'm all ears. Yes, Mr. Day?
Yeah, I think, you know, cybersecurity is a huge thing and, but I think that, you know, the government of Guam, you're in a unique position to set the standard that we have to meet, right? Right now, if you look at what the federal government requires of contractors, there's a significant cybersecurity component to that. If you want to solve cybersecurity problems for Gov-Guam and Guam as a whole, require it of the providers, that you have to meet a specific standard that's already been documented by the federal government. Believe me, that would, that's a, and believe, we are doing that kind of work now and it's a high standard and it's evolving. But the government of Guam has the capability doing that simply by making that a requirement for any providers that provide services to the government of Guam have to comply with a certain cybersecurity standard level. And that's going to require everyone to upgrade their cybersecurity capabilities, which will also benefit the public because those same network infrastructure also services the public. So I, you know, again, the government has the ability to implement those kind of programs by making that a requirement for services that the government purchases from everybody up here.
I just going to want to add in, yeah.
GTA?
Again, just for all of us, you know, we all operate in some sense data centers. So for the government in Guam, you know, we've been trying to encourage them to put their architecture on any of our footprint. It's protected infrastructure, it's well-built, it takes out some of the, definitely the physical security and the resiliency off the table. But a lot of it has to do with endpoint protection. And I think what worries us is it's really disparate within the government of Guam. You have different agencies that have different policies and if we can collectively get together, I think all of us have solutions that can solve those problems. The challenge is convincing the government of Guam to enable the carriers or the service providers to deploy those solutions for them and have a consistent, reliable solution really on protected infrastructure. I mean, it worries us when we, when we, some of us look at the data centers that are built out today for the government of Guam, it certainly has a lot of areas that it can improve. And we understand the constraint on CapEx and OpEx and a lot of us are well-suited to address those needs. But, you know, again, it's thinking, you know, a little bit longer term in terms of protecting the infrastructure that's already in place, so.
If I just may add to that, I agree 100%. And I think it's one reason why the federal government and the Department of Defense is getting away from government-owned data centers because it is a tremendous 100% job that you got to stay on top of it. And then when you get to the end-user, if you have like an old router in a closet that most agencies kind of just set up a broom closet, have routers and servers in it, and if you don't update that, you know, that system and have a patchwork management system, that's where they come in. I mean, they're, these hackers, they're out everywhere searching and it just takes one weak point. And that's why a lot of, there's a general movement to go to the larger privately-owned data centers because that's what they have to do to, in order to compete. And it just takes one old piece of equipment or, you know, one, you know, security event at the endpoint and it creates a problem.
Thank you. Anyone?
There's a whole of government compliance requirement by Q3 of next year for cyber border gateway compliance. So the government of Guam has to get on board with regards to that. I don't know if the Office of Technology is doing that, but that's what Roland's kind of recommending.
Maybe that would lead into my next question. Maybe that would lead into my next question, because it seems like the questions I have is literally geared to everything that you guys are just asking for. And I was just gonna say, can you go down the line and ask our telecom, the telecom providers what they believe is the best use of these funds are, and how you believe we can best achieve increasing access to affordable, high-speed internet? I guess I'll start with you, Miss, any, any one of you want to jump in on that?
Well, you know, putting fiber out into the network, and all the way to the endpoint, which means to the house, not to the curb or to the neighborhood, but to the house, that is the ultimate solution, because once you have fiber into a location, the amount of capacity that you can put over that fiber is almost unlimited. And when we think about, well, why does, why do people need this much capacity? Remember cable TV, I'm sorry, Dokomo, you probably know this already, cable TV is going away. Everything's gonna be over that IP connection, everything. And things that we can't even imagine are gonna be using that connection. So we, the fiber technology enables that. So, you know, this program, if it's implemented the way that, the way that it could be or should be, would put, would meet that promise, and would put that connection to every home or every apartment building or every business on the island. But you have to understand that that, like making an omelet, you've got to break some eggs to do that. It's gonna change the dynamic, because my company, for example, has very little fiber deployed. We endorse this because it will give us access to fiber to all these locations around the island. Other companies have quite a bit of fiber deployed. They don't want other fiber going out there that's controlled by the government or sponsored by the government that comes with a bunch of rules and regulations. So that's, that's the thing, you're gonna have, it's a balance, right? You're gonna have to work it, but the good news is, $150 million is enough to do everything we want to do.
Any other thoughts?
If you help with the permitting to do it.
So we, you know, as I said in my initial comments, underground fiber is the solution all the way around, and this, and this funding is adequate to do that, to do the training, to get people, you know, trained to do that. I had a guy, you know, we're building out fiber right now, we're regularly building fiber in our network, and the, one of my, one of my COACs guys, my HFC technicians came up to me and said, hey, you know, if we're going fiber, what's, what am I gonna do? And I said, you better learn to splice fiber, because, you know, what he's doing, this old technology is just, it's not relevant anymore in this world, and getting, getting to fiber as quickly as we can is the solution. So I think that's, that's gonna be the best possible way, and it's also, it's resilient, and it also is future-proof, because it's the speed of light. And, you know, there's just a lot of different things you can do and layer on top of that once that's done. So it's an opportunity I hope we don't miss, yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
I'll just add on, I think, I think, one, just, you know, trust the operators, we're all experienced, we know how to do this business. I think we're, we, you know, as Jim alluded to, we're doing the most advanced stuff already in our community, despite what we characterize for Guam. And then I think, too, the other component in terms of building network out is also that pushing that affordability matrix. We've been talking about maybe increasing the allowance, today it's $35, it's gonna get sunsetted, but maybe there's a bucket of money there that the government could advance. It would, again, address the affordability, but then also get people pushed up into tiers that may not have been available to them before, but certainly, we're all building towards and will exceed in today's format, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, Senator Sinagastin, do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to comment to what the gentleman mentioned about have the government require something. Be careful what you ask the government, because you're already asking the government how to reduce some of the, what the requirements are. So as soon as you get that information, and Dan knows where I'm coming from, with Vice Speaker, on what you want to recommend, make adjustments in the rules and regulations or the laws, then we can start talking, because I believe in that. Once I see the writings, then I'm ready to start carving it up, and we identify where we need to send it to. Because I deal in operation and appropriation, it concerns me, and that's why I brought up, I only brought up cybersecurity because of, we're dealing with internet, phone, hey, are you gonna have any cybersecurity? And if you guys do it, then great. Don't ask the government to add their piece, sometimes they don't even know what they're adding. They just add something, just an excuse to be involved. You're involved, that's what you need. And when you mention cables going out, Dokomo, don't be in a rush, Dokomo, because I got cable, okay? I got Dokomo, I'm hooked up to Dokomo, I'm also hooked up to GTA, and half of my staff is with ITNE, so I'm like, I got you guys on board. I just need to make sure that whatever we need to do, let's just do this right. Then let's get the biggest bang, because I know for a fact, when they said 156 million, I'm like, why only that? I mean, I don't care what's going on in California, I really don't care what's going on in the States. If we can get more than 156, let's get more. If we can drop more on Guam, then so be it, because in the States, it's different, Guam's not the same, we're not the same as, same size, and we're far out here. We got the Jones Act, we got all the Acts to prevent us from getting what we want. And I do believe on the permits, we do need to look at the permits, because on many of the issues that's happened to businesses, the permits have reached a point where, it's your own line, now you need a permit to open your own line? Come on, stop. We need to figure that out. And when you identify service providers, your first responders, then let's figure out how we can work that. Because I know, Vice Speaker would love, we introduce it, we push it, and then we'll tell you who's holding it back. Because I don't hold anything back, and neither does Vice, and several of our senators don't like to hold things back. We push it as far as we can, and then we'll let you know, because some of them don't like to be bothered by constituents, especially if you're in the business to have a long list of constituents, they're saying, Afa, you're denying me an opportunity to get a cheaper cost? You're denying me an opportunity to improve my service, the service I'm getting? We'll let you know. Trust me, I have, that's my problem, it says here somewhere, no fear, I have no fear of these people. I just want to do what's good for the people of Guam, and I'm good with that. I sleep good at night, folks, gentlemen, I sleep good at night. I go out to eat everywhere else that you guys do eat. I have no problem eating with people, as long as we're taking care of the people, which you goes, all do. Let's just do it all together. Let's not make the excuse of, no, 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 it's one people, all of ours are on the same island, maybe here for ages, but he said, what agency were you running for? You said you're ages, ITNE, what were you running before, sir?
Motorola.
Motorola, on Guam.
I was on GTE.
Okay, no, because I know there's a Motorola company in Hammond industrial park.
You're aging us, Senator.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, it's okay. Thank you, Madam Vice.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and with the comments set by Senator Sinagastin, literally, this committee has literally taken the time to listen to the issues out there, and in order for things to work, we got to bring both the government perspective, because that's who we are, right? And we're the policy component, but you guys are the ones who provide the services, and it's gotta work all the way around. And I always said, if you bring everybody to the same table, right, you can't say he said, she said, kind of thing, let's, let's, let's see what we can do together. We may not always agree, I heard you say that earlier, Dan, but there are times when we just need to set everything aside and see what's good for Guam, because if it's good for all of Guam, then it literally makes it for an easier place for us to be at. And I am impressed that it was noted by you, Roland, that, yes, we are, we do have the expertise, we are doing it here, we're already up to par in a lot of things, but what more can we do? And the frustration, Mr. Day, that you, you've talked about, about the permits and just the bureaucracy of getting things down, I'm here to listen, believe it. Anybody who's worked with me, I'm not a quitter, I work really hard, I don't want to fight. The fight I do is to facilitate and make sure we all get it together. Bring the industry partners together, bring the government together, and if there's that obstacle, I want to see it, but we got to hear it. This meeting was really important, 156 million, maybe Trump changed to somebody in the United States on the national level to us, that's a lot, and I want to make sure that we all share in working on that, because you guys provide, I'm not kidding, the criticalness of the things you provide for our people from our, I'm gonna start from the top, from the manomko to our nannies, you guys do that, and without you, we won't be around, and believe it. Before, we get a, we used to get a, what do you call that, a pager message, right? And we go to go find a phone to get something done. I mean, what my granddaughter said, Mom, what's a rotary phone? And I went, oh my God, you, that's right, you don't. She's only 23 years old, she doesn't, never saw that, just crazy, right? Things have changed, but you guys are the experts, and we're here to help make the policy right for the whole island of Guam. So before I call this meeting to a close, I want to say that this informational hearing is going to, before we adjourn, if anybody wishes to have any comments, write any comments, or share any issues of concern, please do so by sending it, sending your concerns to my email, it's senatorsunabarnes@guamilegalithure.org, or hand-delivering any of your comments, written testimony to my office at the fourth floor, Bank of Hawaii Building, 134 West Sala dot Avenue, Haganea, Guam, 96910. And if there's no other comments at this time, it's almost 4 o'clock, it's, what, 3:56? Do you have any last comments, GTA? Any last comments? No?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Yeah.
He's arrived.
Just know that we're here, and, and, you know, Guam has been a resilient island, we continue, when things are thrown at us, Mother Nature and all that, we're resilient, we always pull through, when we need it the most, we all come together, and this is what we're doing today. We want to do it, we want to do it right. We're gonna continue to hear from you. There are some timelines by the government, we're hoping that all of the concerns come up, and if you have any of your write-ups and want me to know, please, don't hesitate to send it to us. I know we've got the five-year plan, if anybody out there who's listening wants to look at it, I know it's online, it's on the Google Drive, but we also have a copy if they want to take a look at it. So it is, to get the right time right now, it's 3:57 PM, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for coming this afternoon, and we'll continue to hear from you. Senamasi.